Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Regular Meeting at Waterbury Arts Magnet School, January 18th, 2018. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer.
In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember three former employees of the Waterbury Public Schools. Mrs. Gina Calabrese passed away on December 27th. Gina began her Waterbury career as principal of Walsh School in 1999, and in 2005 she was named principal of Rotella School. Under her leadership, Rotella was named Best Magnet School in America in 2007, and Gina was named Magnet School of America Principal of the Year in 2011. The second person we draw your attention to is Mrs. Michelle O'Neil, a former speech pathologist who passed away on December 26th. And the third person is Mrs. Mary Gil-Martin Bowlin, a former home economics teacher who passed away on January 11th. And so we ask that you remember and recognize the folks that we just named for their service and dedication to the students of our school system.
Let us also remember the family of Louise Brown, who was our grants manager, the passing of her son, Joseph. Thank you. And also, Dr. Lou Patawa's mom died. He is the principal of Waterbury Career Academy. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone.
Commissioner Waugh?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Thiriault?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present.
Thank you. Communication dated December 20th, 2017, from Louise Ellen Brown regarding 2017 general improvements to Alliance District School Building Grant. Copy of communication dated December 21st, 2017, from Director of Finance, Michael LeBlanc, regarding submission of the city's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. Email communication dated 21st from Robert Goodrich regarding hiring process for new superintendent. Communication dated December 21st from Civil Service certifying Bridget Naido Aronson, Terry Brooks, Elizabeth Justo, and Robin Rose for the position of food service helper. Email communication dated December 22nd from CADE, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, regarding policy highlights. Communication dated December 27 from Civil Service certifying Mary Ryan, Lubna Azam, Jennifer Santiago, Esther Beeny, and Francesca Rivera for the position of food service worker. Communication dated December 27 from Civil Service certifying Nola Santiago and Zamil Zuleka for the position of lunch aid. Communication dated December 27 from Civil Service certifying Antonio Mangovero for the position of maintainer one, Joseph Chichello Senior for the position of maintainer two, and Jared Cabral for the position of maintainer two. Email communication dated January 5th, 2018, from CADE regarding policy highlights. Copy of communication dated January 8th, 2017, 2018, from Civil Service certifying Nicola Moreno Junior for the position of maintainer one, and Sharonda Saunders for the position of lunch aid. And finally, January 16th, 2018, from Civil Service regarding the selection of Laura Curley Cologne as elementary school supervising vice principal, Gil Martin, and Maria Jimenez as elementary school supervising vice principal, Tinker. I have a motion.
Motion to receive and place on file. Communications is read.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, going to public address. Could I have a motion, please?
May I suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. First on the list is John Thiriault. Commissioner John Thiriault, sorry.
His honor. No need for malady here. My name is John Thiriault. I reside at 40 Brackenridge Drive, Waterbury, Connecticut. I stand before you, sometimes being accused of being cantankerous, other times being accused of being confrontational, sometimes uncooperative, but I can assure you, always 100 percent for the students in the city of Waterbury. Always, always, always number one, in my mind. So I just wanted to clear that up, because I want no vague impression left in anyone's mind regarding some derogatory comments that were made against me, which I will hold personally and forever. That being said, it's amazing that we had a report at our workshop with regard to chronic absenteeism. And we see the chronic absenteeism in our high schools, students being absent approximately 20 days or more, as being in the 30 to 35 percentile. It's no wonder our scores are 3.7 percent at Crosby, with 96 percent of our students in the 10th grade failing math on the SAT. The scores on the Smarter Balance test are no better, in fact, they're worse. Not one school in the entire district has achieved the state average in any of those tests, and that includes the CMT in science. So to say we're doing better under the previous leadership, we haven't. To say we're doing better under the Blueprint for Change and all of the other central office staff we've hired, I have to share the blame around with them and us. I have been working on reports on this board for over 10 years. One report here starts in 2005, and it has every school in the entire district. And you can see the number of excused, unexcused, tardies, and we no longer count tardies anymore. We do to a point a little bit if a kid comes in at 12 o'clock, but basically, three tardies do not equal an absence anymore. So as we look at this delirious data, in terms of the absenteeism of our student body, we have to hold ourselves accountable and put our own feet to the fire. It's not just them, it's us. So I wanted to share this report with you, so that as you looked over the other report that we got on chronic absenteeism, you'll be able to see what our past data and information was. And this information I will share was provided to me by the 180-day report that Will Zuda gives me, and it is then collated into this form, so that you can look at it, read it. And I want you to pay particular attention to the number of student absences. It's the second column on the right, and you'll see the population of the students and the number of student absences per student. And that is also delirious. So I think I'm about done. I haven't used up my five minutes, and I'll pass this out to you, so everyone can look at it and enjoy it and decipher it. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, may we have a motion?
Motion returned. Do it again.
Second.
Thank you. Next is Deputy Superintendent's announcements.
I'd like to begin the Deputy Superintendent's Report this evening by inviting the public to visit our school district's website and to take part in a survey regarding the traits that you'd like to see in a new Waterbury Public School Superintendent of Schools. The link to the survey is available on the News and Announcements section of our website. Next, I'd like to share with you, I attended a wonderful youth summit at the Waterbury Career Academy this past Saturday. It was coordinated by the Concerned Black Clergy Council, as well as the Waterbury Public Schools. In attendance was our Vice President and part of the coordination of the event, Karen Harvey, and Commissioners Thomas Van Stone and Juanita Hernandez. The event served as a wonderful opportunity for us to reflect on the message from Dr. King that talks about ensuring racial equality, as well as a nonviolent approach to social change. I shared at the time part of our, as a school system, approach to making Dr. King's dream a reality, with the fact that we have high expectations for everyone, for all, and a mission around academic achievement for each student, and the fact that we actually promote values and conflict resolution skills with the expectation that we will have individuals that will become peaceful and productive adults. One of King's message, Dr. King's message was that intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character has to be the goal of a true education. And it's from that standpoint that we shared the quote, as well as challenged everyone in attendance to actually select one small action that will be of service to somebody that they know, which was part of the request of the King family. Several students were honored that afternoon for their service to others, and I'll name a few of them. They received the Martin Luther King Service Award. We had Abina Kufour from Crosby, Ashley Lamb from Kennedy, Indira Rupa from Enlightenment, Chris Lewis Da Cruz from Waterbury Career Academy, Joel Muñoz, Waterbury Arts Magnet, Mariah Smith from Wilby High School, Mackaya Hayes of Sacred Heart, Gillian Noak from Holy Cross, Mohamed Amil from Keener Tech. And there was one teacher that also was recognized and received the Leadership Award, the Martin Luther King Leadership Award, and that was Cassandra Fan Pierce from Kennedy High School. The next communication or statement has to do with the fact that I met with our parent liaison, and I shared with them my vision for improving parental engagement in our district. We have asked each school to ensure that they have a representative that is going to join the District Parent Advisory Council, and we have asked also that beyond the School Governance Council, each school establish a PTA or PTO-type organization, so that we can continue to work with them in terms of supporting their growth as an entity on behalf of the interests of students. The central office staff, we recently held a cabinet retreat. Our intent was to revisit where the district has been, examining where we are today and projecting where we need to be going in the near future. We coalesced around an agenda for the next six months and started to consider the goals for the next school year, 2018-2019. As promised, we have started and we launched our annual reporting schedule of board presentations the last time that this board met, and what we presented at the time were the status of our grants, as well as discussion of the chronic absenteeism and suspension rates. Our intent is to continue each month to provide topics that are of importance and interest to the board, to assist in their carrying out their respective responsibilities as public officials. We are inviting parents and community members to attend a Connecticut School Finance Project, something called School Finance 101, Community Forums, where you will be able to learn about the funding for school districts, particularly its impact on Waterbury. The forum for us will be held on Wednesday, January 24th, between 5:30 and 7:30 at Reed School, and there is a snow date, just in case, and that'll be January 31st. Like to simply remind all as well that high school students are currently engaged in taking midterm exams, and tomorrow will be the last day. To the larger community as well, please note that they will be starting kindergarten registration during the month of February. All kindergarten registrations will be processed at the Waterbury Family Intake Center at 1 Jefferson Square on the first floor. Registration hours are from 8:15 to 2:30, and it's open from Monday through Friday. This applies to children that are five years old, honor before January 1st, 2019. Please note that if students, potential students, have at home a language other than English, we're requesting that the child accompany the parent or adult registering them, so that we can actually test for language dominance and identify any specific service that may be warranted based on that. We also will be accepting application for preschool at the Office of Early Childhood Education at 30B Church Street. The application and the income verification forms for school readiness are also available on our website. Final announcement regarding applications for Maloney and Rotella Magnet Schools, the lotteries will be upcoming, and that will begin February 1st and closing February 28th. So the entire month of February, the applications can be submitted. There will be informational sessions held at both those schools. At Maloney, it will be Thursday, January 18th. There'll be two sessions between 9:30 and 6:30. And at Rotella, it's going to be on Thursday, January 25th, two sessions as well, 9:30 and 6:00 p.m. And with that, Madam President, it concludes the report.
Any questions for Deputy Superintendent? Thank you very much. Lots of activity. Just a few items. I want to thank all of everybody who was involved with the planning for Martin Luther King. I want to thank Commissioner Harvey and Mary Ann Merrill from our FACE Center, who spent a lot of time on the planning committee, including myself, and I think it was a great success, and I want to thank everybody who had an opportunity to attend, and hopefully we can keep the spirit of Martin Luther King alive in our work and our thoughts. I just want to just mention, and you probably know, that the very landmark CJF case was heard by the Supreme Court, and the defendant, and they ruled in favor of the defendant, which was the state of Connecticut. And the judges ruled that the responsibility for equity in education lies with the legislature, and it was not the purview of the Supreme Court to rule on that. So it was kind of bounced back into the legislature. So I think this is something very critical to our district, especially in light of reduction in funding and pending budgetary issues facing the state. I think we have to be vigilant, and I believe, Commissioner Sweeney, you're setting up legislative directives. So that's in the works, so we will be meeting with our legislators, and hopefully people can attend and voice our concern about funding and other issues impacting the district. Also, I want to thank Mr. Henry and the staff for really, really spending time thinking about the district and the goals and where we want to go. And sometime in February, we will be meeting as a board to try to work with staff and Mr. Henry to kind of go over their thoughts and have some input. So I look forward to that dialogue, as we continue to kind of look at where we are, where we want to go. And that's about it. Thank you. Kathy?
Just as a point of information, the Waterbury Chamber of Commerce will be holding an economic and legislative session next Tuesday morning, where Senator Hartley will be leading a breakout session regarding taxing and spending. So if any of the board members were interested in attending, if you wanted to work through me, I could help you attend that, and you know, there's an opportunity for, give an exchange, you could ask some questions. There'll be other legislators in that planning session as well.
Great, thank you. Could you email that information?
Certainly.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, that's it. And now we'll go to the consent calendar. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will read the consent calendar. 8.1, Request Approval of an Agreement with North Kentucky Valley Community College for the Gear Up Program. 8.2, Request Approval of a Student Intern Affiliation Agreement at No Cost with Quinnipiac University to Provide School Psychologist Student Internships. 8.3, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Departments. 8.4, Committee of School Facilities and Grounds, Use of School Facilities by Outside Organizations and/or Waiver Requests. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. No items removed from the consent calendar? Committee on Policy, Commissioner Sweeney.
Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Policy, Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the following revisions to the Bylaws of the Board, Number 901O Organization. Organization, Point A currently reads, "The Board of Education shall consist of the mayor and 10 elected members. Six members shall constitute a quorum. The mayor is the chairman ex officio of the Board. The members of the Board shall elect by majority vote a president and vice president. The proposal is to add and secretary." And the last line will now read, "The members of the Board shall elect by majority vote a president, vice president, and secretary." Section B, "The organizational meeting of the Board shall be held at such time as the mayor may direct on or may direct or on December 1st of each odd-numbered year. The meeting shall be called to order by the chairman. Before acting, the members shall be duly sworn to their faithful performance of the duties of their office as prescribed by law. The Board shall proceed to elect by roll call by a majority of its members, present and absent, a president, vice president," and again, to add the term "and secretary." So that final line will now read, "The Board shall proceed to elect by roll call by a majority of its members, present and absent, a president, vice president, and secretary." Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Discussion. Just some background, we find ourselves not in compliance with state law in terms of the configuration of our Board, and this is, the election tonight of a secretary is to come into compliance with state law. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 10.2.
Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Policy, Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the following revisions to the Bylaws of the Board, Number 901O, Duties of the Secretary. Currently, the bylaws list the duties of the president. In the absence of the chairman, the Board president shall preside at all board meetings. The president shall appoint liaison positions as appropriate. The president shall appoint ad hoc committees as needed. Duties of the vice president. In the absence of the chairman and the president, the vice president shall preside at the board meeting. The proposal is to add the duties of the secretary. Review and report minutes to the Board in the absence of the chairman, the president, and the vice president. The secretary shall preside at the board meeting.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Commissioner Harvey, Vice President Harvey.
Thank you, Madam President. How did that, read that motion to me again, Commissioner Sweeney.
The whole motion or just the addition?
In the very beginning, what you said.
With the approval of the Committee on Policy, Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the following revisions to the Bylaws of the Board.
Okay, stop, stop right there. Is that a recommendation of the Deputy Superintendent, or is that a recommendation of the Committee of the Whole?
It's a recommendation of the Committee of the Whole.
Right, so should it read?
Through the chair, I think the...
So I'm just questioning, I'm just questioning, is it, all due respect to Deputy Superintendent, that is a board function. So is it the Deputy Superintendent recommending this, or is it the Committee of the Whole? I'm just questioning the wording on that. Because we're doing, these are our bylaws, and the Deputy Superintendent, Superintendent, whoever's in that position does not have really any say on that.
Commissioner Awat?
I would just say that Vice President Harvey is correct, the motion should be Committee of the Whole. That it was, that's who's recommending the change, and that's who's going to vote on the change.
So noted, so with that amendment, would everybody agree to that amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
I would...
Discussion.
Madam President? I would suggest that, in looking at that, it really, this really should be with the approval of the Committee of the Whole.
That's right.
The Committee on Policy recommends.
Absolutely.
Is that clear? Okay.
Everybody's agreed to that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that correction. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No, that was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
Now you have to vote on the main motion.
Okay, that was just on the amendment to make it the Committee on the Whole and the Policy Committee. That's passed, now we're voting on the underlying motion.
Yes.
Could I, we had a, we had a motion in a second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Committee on School Personnel, Commissioner Stango.
Item 11.1, Lateral Transfer Request. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Deputy Superintendent of School recommends approval of the lateral transfer request of Jessica Ocasio from the supervising vice principal of Tinker School to the supervising vice principal of Walsh School, effective December 11th, 2017. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the Committee of the Whole, we're going to go right to the election of the Board Secretary, per state statute. The matter now before this board is the election of a secretary. The chair recognizes Commissioner Juanita Hernandez for the purpose of the nomination.
Madam President, honorable members of the Board of Education, it is both an honor and a privilege to place into nomination the name of Commissioner Ann Sweeney as secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a roll. Thank you, Commissioner Theryo. We need a roll, roll call.
Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Soriano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Theryo?
Abstained.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Commissioner Sweeney?
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Notification to the Board. Could I have a motion, please?
Those receiving please have filed Superintendent's Notification to the Board, item 13.1, the 13 points.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. And now we're going to 14, Unfinished Business, a preceding meeting only. Okay, 15, Other Unfinished, New, and Miscellaneous Business. Vice President Harvey?
No, Commissioner Theryo.
Commissioner Theryo?
I think we should also be looking at some of our staff that passes on, in addition to just teachers and kind of prominent people. You know, I was, I taught in eight schools in Waterbury in my 32 glorious years, and they were all glorious years. And I never met a bad kid. And I never met a bad secretary. All my secretaries made me look good, even when I wasn't good. So to all those secretaries out there and all the clerical staff, kudos to all those people. And, you know, we should start recognizing some of those people occasionally at the board here, you know, for their years of service. And also the bus drivers and the crossing guards and the little people that make our system successful. You know, it's the little people that make the hands of the clock turn and the gears turn, and I think we should reach out to those people and have special recognition awards for those people. I also think we should think about, at one point in time, maybe next year, doing a summit for Youth Day in Government, which the JCs sponsored years ago. And in fact, Joe Santa Pietro took part in that, and when he did, he said, "I'm going to be mayor of this town someday," as he took part in that. So it's a good way to encourage youth to participate. And kudos to Joe, who's done, made a few mistakes, but he's done more good for this town than many, many, many other people. And also, I'd like to congratulate, or not congratulate, but recognize the passing of Rose Brown from Sprague School, who was a secretary for Billy Monigan, who always made Billy Monigan look good, because Billy Monigan always looked good. Rose was a secretary at middle schools and various other schools throughout the district. She was a wonderful, wonderful lady with a good family and good family values. And it's, it was my pleasure to know Rose, and Billy's pleasure to have her as a secretary for covering up those few mistakes that he made. And so as we go forward, let's also include, and if the public knows about anyone that we should include in our, on our dais here. Let us know, the clerk of the board, and we'll make sure that we include the big notorious people that have done the great and glorious things, as well as the little people that have done the little and glorious things. Thank you.
Vice President Harvey?
Thank you, Madam President. Just in, I just wanted to mention regarding the MLK Summit, Youth Summit, to thank the concerned clergy. This is the third annual MLK Youth Summit, and I wanted to just thank them for organizing this. We hope to continue on with this recognition. It's very important that our students are aware of the values that Martin Luther King preached about, and so we are very pleased that they are doing it, they are partnering with the Waterbury Public Schools. I want to thank them. Madam President, I want to just point out that we have a conflict on January 24th. We have two events. The, there is a community forum that's being held by Ray Associates for the Superintendent of Schools, and we have a community forum that is being held for school finance, which Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Henry has mentioned, at Reed School. Now, and that is sponsored by the Waterbury Public Schools. So we are working against each other. And I'm going to say that I did mention to Mr. Morgan that that date stood out for some reason, and I found out that it was an event that we are sponsoring, and that we should try to avoid that date. But I've been informed that it's already been confirmed. So if indeed, if that is indeed the case, then what I'm requesting is that we have another forum. We've had two forums for the Superintendent of Schools, because this forum for the school finance, there are folks that are coming in from out of town. It has been publicized very well, and it's going to take away from the community's involvement with the selection of the superintendent. So I'm proposing that Ray and Associates not only, you know, have the forum on the 24th, but also have another forum the following week, so that we can have full participation from the community.
I will talk to Scott to find out if we can move that. I'm not sure of the timeframe, because this is in the hands of civil service, but I absolutely will make the case that this might be good to move.
All right, and it's, I'm not asking to move it, I'm asking if we're going to keep it, let's have two forums then, one on the 24th, as planned, and another one the following week, so that we can get those that attend the finance, school finance forum.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Can then have the opportunity to attend the other one.
That's a good idea, okay.
All right. And lastly, just want to mention that, as everyone will, you know, probably knows, that Black History Month is in February, and I'm looking forward to learning about what activities there will be in the schools, Mr. Henry. Usually there is, they put together calendars on what they plan to do in the schools, and I hope that we will continue to do that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, good point. Commissioner Adorno?
Hi, thank you, Madam President. So as a new commissioner, I've been trying to visit some of the schools and really just introduce myself and try to take a tour of the schools or try to sit in as possible. So I worked during the day, so sometimes that's a little hard. I was able to schedule a few days off right before the holidays. And of course, the weather kicks in and had emergency dismisses and so forth, so it kind of limited where I was able to go. But I did have the opportunity to see Dr. Bejo at Buck's Hill at a few different events, and she had one of the events for the families from Puerto Rico. But there's still, you know, I don't want to forget them, because there's many out in Puerto Rico. I have a lot of families that still have no power. So it was nice to be invited to that event, even though it was like a last-minute thing. There was a lot of other state officials there, and we each had the opportunity to just kind of, you know, tell them what we did and if they had any questions. It was like an open forum. They had dinner. It was really nice to be there. St. Mary's Hospital was able to provide the students their little gifts and stuff like that. But I was also able to visit Enlightenment with Mr. Arroyo, and what I actually liked is that they, he wasn't trying to direct me to the main office. He was in, happened to be at CAF duty, and I went right to the CAF, and the staff was able to do a special dinner for the students. And I put my gloves on, and I actually served the students. So, and not only did I see some familiar faces, but it was nice to just really, you know, just be open to it. And that's exactly what I, what I, what I want. I don't want it to be where it's just behind closed doors. I really want to take a good look at what's going on. But I've also been trying to start visiting after-school programs as well, because I work during the day, so it kind of limits where I can go. So I did have the opportunity to go to Walsh Elementary School's after program, after-school program. So there was a before and after school, the Century 21 and the Uplifting Life Program. So I found the kids to be engaged. I had the opportunity, like, I asked them three questions. What did they like about it? Was there anything they didn't like? What would they like changed? Just to kind of get, from the kids' perspective, a little bit, and from the teachers itself, giving an explanation about the programs and if they faced any challenges and stuff like that. So overall, I mean, it was good. There were a few concerns from some of the students and complaints about the food and the supper, and even about a particular teacher's teaching method. So I just want, like, we need to ensure that the after-school programs are not only, you know, helping the kids with their homeworks and educational, but it's also about fun. You know, you got to keep the kids interested and engaged and be a little interactive. So maybe some of the teaching methods, you know, instead of, you know, a lot of dialogue to kind of maybe interact with the kids a little bit more. So my goal is to really to continue to, you know, visit some of the after schools and maybe eventually, if I have some more time that I'm able to take, really try to visit more of the schools and get up more feedback that way, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, there are, let's see, there's no executive session this evening, so could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much.[1731.88]